Our next presentation will be Affordable Housing, deep dive presentation. And we're going to call Anthony Scott, our Director for Durham Housing Authority.
So, good, was it afternoon yet? Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you for having me here today. I'm going to first say to my folks over at JJ, Zahid and I were trying to connect. So I will follow up with you guys in terms of what you shared today because it's the first overhearing of that. So I just want to let you guys know that. So we'll follow up soon. So I want to talk a little bit about DHA and from the standpoint of who we are as an organization and what we're trying to do and what some of our challenges are. So first, starting with who is DHA? Let me just change this to a presentation. Many people think that DHA is a part of the city as a department, and it is not. We are chartered by the state of North Carolina and we operate under those guidelines overall. We are locally formed in that you all, the City Council and the Mayor appoints our Board of Directors and we are federally funded. So we touched all the basic areas, but we're a little bit schizophrenic in that we're not a city department. 100% of our funding for our operations comes from the federal government. Our current budget is somewhere around $50 million. We have budgeted staff of 117. However, I can tell you that we have struggled mightily with being able to fill all our positions over the last really four or five years. It's certainly exacerbated over COVID as it has with many businesses. And one of the things that I always think is interesting to point out is that even though we're federally funded, 80% of our budget actually goes right into the local dorm economy. Our Housing Choice Voucher Program is our largest program, is approximately $27 million, and most of that funding, as many of you know, goes towards the, goes for the participants of the program that funds the subsidy to the landlords for their housing. And in terms of our breakdown of our revenue that comes in, 86% of our funding is from federal grants and 13% comes from tenant rents. So the properties that we own are managed under a basic premise that residents pay 30% of their rent. It's a failed model, just doesn't work. Because we get subsidy from the federal government, it used to be when housing authorities were created, the federal government committed to providing the funding necessary to properly operate these properties. But that, of course, does not happen. We are at the mercy of the federal government on a given annual basis. We never know what our funding will be from year to year. As you all are aware, they just passed the funding that included funding for HUD a few weeks ago. And fortunately, the funding for this year looks to be a little bit more than what was received last year, which is saying something, but even that funding is much below what the need is. So we're always, we're happy to get what we've got the year before, but we find ourselves in a position that it's still not enough, so we continue to fall further behind. Affordable housing is subsidized in ways in which it includes our public housing programs. We've done more now with the RAD program, which allows us to redevelop these properties so that we can get money in to fix them up in a decent way. And more critically, it allows us to manage them better financially because we have more resources coming in because everything is not 100% federally supported. And the public housing, I'm sorry, under the RAD program that focuses on typically with tax credit, 60% of the area median income. Now, it's a little bit deceptive because more recently, they created a program where you can do what's called income averaging. So you can actually go up to 80% of the income, but overall, in a given property, it averages out to be 60. So you can have lower incomes, you can have higher up to 80%, but it has to average at least 60 overall. Our voucher program, our Housing Choice Voucher, commonly called Section 8, it's administered by us, but the housing is actually provided by the private sector. Again, it's based on 30% in income. That resident who's paying that 30% pays it directly to the landlord. We pay that 70% directly to the landlord. There are several specialty voucher programs such as emergency housing vouchers. We have something called Veterans Vouchers or VASH. There's a couple of others, I can't recall them off the top of my head, but there's a smaller programs that might be anywhere from 20 to 30, sometimes even in the teens of those voucher programs. Most of those are done in collaboration with the CLC, with the City of Durham. For overall, DHA has about 17 sites and about 1,700 units. Our occupancy rate right now is 99% and we have a waiting list of over 5,000 families. And what you see in this graphic is that most of those families are looking for housing in one bedrooms or studios, but 90-plus percent of it is looking for three bedrooms or two bedrooms or less. So that need is very, very high throughout and that's been part of our strategy as we've looked to redevelop our housing, is to focus on where we're seeing the most need and we derive that by looking at what's actually on our waiting list. On the voucher side, we have a little under 3,100 Housing Choice Vouchers. 2,200 or so of those are tenant-based, which means that they are given directly to individuals for their family and they go wherever they choose to. We have something called project-based vouchers and those are vouchers that stay with a particular building. So a person comes and goes, but the voucher subsidy remains at the building itself. And then those specialty vouchers I mentioned, we have a little less than 500 of those. All in all, in every given month, we have 166 families currently that are out there, but we've averaged around 200 families on any given month that have a voucher, one of these two, either tenant-based or specialty voucher, that is currently looking for housing. So the need in terms of landlords to accept those vouchers remains very high. Our tenant-based waiting list is currently at 338 families. That seems like a low number, but it's low because we issue those vouchers every so often. We open the waiting list, I should say, every so often. We keep it at a manageable level of about 1,500 vouchers, no more than that, so that the list doesn't become very stale. And at the end of that period, when we get down to usually a little less than 500, we'll begin to open up that list again so that people can apply. Last time we opened our list, which was about four years ago, we had over 5,000 people apply. We then narrowed it down to 1,500 and so that's where we are currently at a 338. So we will be opening our tenant-based Housing Choice Voucher list at some point this year. Our project-based waiting list, however, is over 10,000 families. So it, again, emphasizes the need of housing, particularly of this type that exists here in Durham. We have a budget of $27.5 million, as I mentioned earlier. We are, remember I talked about we have 3,200 vouchers roughly? We currently have, though, less than that that are actually housed. We're still at 100% of our budget authority. So even though we have more vouchers, we have to manage to our budget. So HUD tells all housing authorities, yes, you may have a higher allocation, but you must manage to your actual budget. And we currently are at about 100% of our budget utilization. The average subsidy that we provide in what's called the Housing Assistance Payment is a little over $800, $808 roughly for what we're providing in subsidy to our families overall. So that's one bedrooms, two bedrooms, studios and larger. Talk a little bit about RAD conversion. So a few years ago, HUD created this program called Rental Assistance Demonstration. It originally started 10 years ago in 2012. It did not attract a lot of attention because it was a very cumbersome program to use. They retooled it and upon retooling, many housing authorities jumped in to take advantage. What RAD essentially does is it allows housing authorities to have more tools in their tool chest, provides $0, but it just gives you opportunities to utilize financing methods that you can't do with regular public housing. That allows us, for example, to use low-income housing tax credits. We can get bank financing. We can also do project-based vouchers. So it allows us a different way to go about utilizing our public housing inventory. And one of the things that we focused on, as you all quite aware of with our DDMP, is that we've looked at the redevelopment of our public housing communities so that we can increase the amount of affordable housing that we have overall, including replacing the existing public housing units. There are built-in protections. There is a lot of concern about with this because it involves the private sector that somehow rents were going to be raised and it was going to be turned into market-rate housing. It's built into the law, key things. One, rents are still going to be based on 30% of your income. There will be no rescreening for any existing resident that becomes a part of a RAD program and the residents have a right to return for those who want to come back to any of the housing that's built on that site. So those are built into the law. Even if DHA wanted to be a bad actor, it couldn't change these basic issues that are in the law. We intend to fully convert all of our public housing communities into the RAD program over time. Some of that involves redevelopment, like you're seeing with the downtown area properties. Some of it are straight conversions that involves rehab, such as what we've done with Maureen Road in DeMar Court. So those are two different examples of the two spectrums that you have in utilizing the RAD program. So this is a chart that gives you a sense of who our DHA families are. Overall, we're just under 9,000 residents currently and about 4,000 families. This is combining public housing, the Housing Choice Voucher Program and the affordable housing portfolio that we have. The average income that you see across all boards is just, you know, $11,363. 26% of our families have jobs and the average rent paid between all programs is $284. And a little bit about how our families break down in more detail based on age. What you'll see is about a little less than 50% of our families are actually 17 and under. When I say families, family members overall, to overall population. And then you'll see that roughly 14% of our families are seniors and in-between is where you have the rest of the family members. So when you look across the programs, you'll see a lot of variety in ages and family sizes, but overall, you'll see the breakdown for that roughly 9,000 individuals breaks out to about a little less than half are actually 17 and under and about 14% are seniors. One of the things I also like to point out is the number of folks that we have that are disabled. So this is a subset of the previous slide I showed. So when you look at throughout our population, not just senior housing, but even within our communities, there are senior residents that are present as well. So you can see the age range of that, that are folks that are, excuse me, not seniors, but disabled. The age range of that in terms of head of households between 18 and 54, 12% of that households are in fact disabled. Between 55 and 61, 9% and 62 and older, 20%. You would expect that to be a slightly higher number. So overall, about 41% of those families are in fact have at least disabled folks as head of households. So with that, I want to talk about the not-so-pleasant part of DHA and the challenges that we've been faced with, and this is something called a recovery agreement. So in 2018, due to the conditions of some of our buildings, DHA fell into what's called a troubled agency status. Since 2018, we have not been reevaluated because of COVID, everything got put on hold, but it doesn't matter. We can tell you by looking at some of our conditions that our properties are still not where we want them to be. So all housing authorities are rated on a system called FAS, Public Housing Assessment System. It's a four-component, it has four components to it, financial, management, physical inspection and capital and points associated with that on a 100-point scale. We've done fine with financial, we've done fine with our capital fund, but when it comes to our physical inspection, that's where we have had issues. And it is no surprise to anybody at the DSA because you know we've been struggling with how we, how do we have the funding to take care of our properties? As a result of us falling into this troubled agency status, we had to go into what's called a recovery agreement with HUD and it outlined three primary goals that the housing authority has to achieve over the next two years. One is that we had to increase our occupancy to at least 95%. We're currently at 98%. And let me put a caveat with that. We're at 98%, however, we are, we are talking to HUD about the fact that they're counting against us, the Liberty Street Apartments and 519 East Main Street vacancies there. We're not leasing there, obviously, because we're in the process of redeveloping that, but that's still counting against our occupancy. So on, on the books at HUD, which you'll see is an occupancy rate at, I think it's 92%, but in reality, when you take those out, we're at a 98% occupancy. And, you know, HUD understands this, we've told them this, they just don't have a category to put units that are in the process of being redeveloped. So they're struggling with trying to figure out how to make it work the way HUD actually evaluates us. Improve our unit conditions, meaning we have to have a passing score of at least 60. And then the third thing is remove McDougal Terrace from the public housing inventory. And it's an interesting way that they've placed that, stated that, but basically they want to see McDougal Terrace come out of the public housing inventory and put in some other kind of, some other kinds of categories. So that could mean either we literally get rid of McDougal Terrace, so I could sell it, we could redevelop McDougal Terrace, or we can do some sort of conversion, which is still the same thing. All this must be accomplished in the next two years. We're now just shy of a year into this. We have monthly reports that we have to do to HUD. We work very closely with the Greensboro Field Office all along the way. So I'm going to come back to this in a little bit, but let me very clearly show you what our unit scores are. So when you look at all of our properties and when you look at 2018, you see what our scores are and that's based on a 100-point scale. You can see we were in 2018. In 2022, they just completed our inspections in the last few months. You can see where our scores are. We are pleased that McDougal Terrace had a 39-point jump from 31 to a 70, but it makes sense when we spent $10 million over the last several years to bring McDougal Terrace to the point it is now, which again, really underscores the point. If we had the money to put into the properties, we could get them in a better, better place. And you can see where we are with the, the ones in yellow are all those sites that are below that 60 mark and you can see what those scores look like and then you can see where some of the others are. Part of our recovery agreement terms, it speaks to us doing something called a physical needs assessment and that's where we have an independent inspector come in, look at the units and make a determination of what the cost will be to bring the units up to par. This is a 20-year lookout and there's a particular emphasis on what you need to do over the next five years, the immediate five years. We've, we've done that for all of our properties and that number is somewhere in the neighborhood of just, just shy of $50 million for all of our properties. And the amount of capital fund that we'll have is approximately $15 million. So we're going to have to make hard choices and decisions around how we spend our $15 million on those properties. And what we're doing is prioritizing health and safety first and foremost, and then looking at other issues that impact our scores as a secondary component. Last piece in here is talking about the recovery agreement is the repositioning of McDougal Terrace. So we started our initial planning work on McDougal Terrace and that would also include the Lincoln Apartments community as well. And because we see those two together and we think that's a, a great way to kind of address some of the challenges with McDougal and we'll talk about this, so why. We've had several meetings with our residents at McDougal, surrounding residents and businesses, Durham Public Schools, NCCU, Durham Tech, all of the folks that you would expect us to talk to, including an interesting one with the North Carolina State Agricultural Foundation. And I'll tell you about why that conversation came about. So with, well, let me go back, I guess, I didn't have more on this. So we're in the planning stages of this and what we're looking at with all of this, because, you know, we don't just look at things in terms of one little site, but we look at the larger community to see how what we're doing could have a larger impact and not just dealing with McDougal Terrace. So in general, what we're looking at is we could do some replacement housing on the Lincoln Terrace, the Lincoln Apartments site to start with. So we have people do essentially one move that would involve having to tear down Lincoln, rebuild a new housing, et cetera, while we look at the planning around McDougal Terrace. In the next month, we're going to finalize our preliminary plan for McDougal Terrace and we'll be sharing that with you all soon. What that calls for is we think we'll be able to replace the existing 360 McDougal Terrace units by combining it with the Lincoln Apartments site and some other partners that we're working with to probably in the neighborhood of about 500 units in that existing area. And that includes working with the Durham Public Schools as well. I mentioned the North Carolina State University Agricultural Foundation because you see at the bottom right, they own a large chunk of land over there and we've been in discussions with them about how we can incorporate that in our overall development activities as well, in terms of being able to provide some quality open space and things of that. So it ties into the park system that we already have. But again, we'll have more details on that in, in the weeks to come. DDMP, you guys have heard a lot about this, so I don't think I need to start from the beginning on that, but you know what's happening there. It's the plan for the downtown sites, you know the properties that are involved with that. It, it will turn to 447 units into about 2,500 units on the sites that DHA owns and controls, plus additional units on the sites that are, include two city-owned sites, South Side Three, and you already are working with the developer on the development of that and the Hunt Street Station is something that will be coming in the future. But the sites controlled by DHA represent the JJ Henderson and the Joyce. As, as we know, we've finished a renovation of JJ Henderson. The Joyce new construction should be opening sometime in March or April. Look for an opening of that coming up soon. Liberty Street and East Main, you know, we've done the demolition for that first portion. We expect to break ground on that by the spring. As well as phases two and three, we will be doing the demolition and breaking ground on that probably shortly thereafter or probably very close at the same time. So we have significant momentum there. The, that, that site, of course, is where we received the $40 million Choice Neighborhoods grant and so things are progressing pretty nicely there. Forest Hill Heights, we're in negotiations with our developer there. We're hoping to have a master development agreement with that submitted to our board in February. And then for the Fayette Place site, we expect to have a master development agreement with them as well in February that comes before our board. So what does all of that look like? JJ and the Joyce, again, you guys have seen this, the renovation of JJ has taken place. This are fairly recent pictures of the Joyce. I went out and got some of these last week. And the other piece about the Joyce that's nice to mention is the Miracle League Field, which DHA owns the land. We donated it to the Miracle League and one of the reasons why is that track that you see that goes around. When talking to our JJ residents years ago, they talked a lot about, we don't have a place to get out and do anything. And so this track that goes around the Miracle League Field will be available for our DHA residents at JJ as well as at the Joyce. But that site is coming along quite nicely and should be open in the next few months. The Liberty and Main Street site, this is the site plan for that. Again, phase one is underway. In terms of breaking ground, that should be in the next couple of months. Phase two through five is where the $40 million Choice Neighborhoods grant will be applied. Phase two and three should begin construction sometime this spring as well. We've already done the first phase of demolition. The second phase of demolition is what we'll be starting in the spring. That includes this portion here, which includes the Resident Services Building. Phase one, of course, is Elizabeth Street and two and three is what we're calling Commerce Street. Forest Hill Heights, Fayette Place and DHA Office. Notice I didn't mention the DHA Office. We're prioritizing the Fayetteville, the Fayette Place site and Forest Hill Heights. And the DHA Office will be put on the back burner until we get further along with those. So this is Forest Hill Heights and I want to make a caveat right here, right now. All of what you're going to see is what was presented to us last year. This is not the more recent iterations of what's happening with this because we're still negotiating, they're still doing some number crunching and trying to figure things out. So what you see will be different, not substantially so in terms of units. The one thing that will be different, if you recall, there were only 55 units in the Forest Hill Heights development that were going to be considered affordable. That number will go up by at least another 62 units and maybe even more, but we're still expecting about 700 units to be on that site, but those numbers will change. This is the Fayette Place site. They presented a proposal of about 700 units. There's been lots and lots of community meetings with that. That number is coming down. There's going to be a homeownership component in this as well. That was part of the feedback that we've gotten and a little bit more commercial as well. So we're trying to see if we can do more there, but we're kind of restricted by the site size, but more on that to come in the coming weeks as well. And overall, I wanted to give you guys a snapshot of what we proposed when we initially did the DDMP proposal to you all. So the DHA component, this is only reflective of that, not the two city sites. We had about 2,275 units that were initially planned. And where we are today, based on the proposals we've received, is that we'll be at 2,544 units. The one thing that, and this was presented to you before, the one thing that is disappointing, but it's a reality of where we are, given what's happened with cost as well as now the new, the new black markets interest rates. We are not able to do as many 80% AMI units where you see the, on the last column, you see a reduction of about 318 units there. And again, this is not final, but based on previous submittals that we received, we will see a net increase of 269 units overall. In particular, we'll see an increase in the 0% to 30% range and an increase in the 50% range of about 96 units, but nowhere near where we want to be, but at least we're getting some more affordability in there. But that 80% number, we just, based on where we are, we're seeing a significant reduction there. And bringing up the rear here, we're talking about some homeownership. We've been working with Habitat for Humanity on 37 lots that were in the Edgemont area and over by Franklin Village. So they have under construction all 37 units now. They've completed, I believe, 33 and, whoops, and this picture in the middle is the last homeowner. They did an opening, did a little event for, for her, I think, back in either December or I think it was December, for the last resident who's going to be getting a house there. So we're excited about finally having built out those 37 units. And by the way, for those of you who are around and remember the old Hope Six project that DHA had, this is the last phase of the Hope Six development and this will conclude, believe it or not, that grant is still considered open. So this will finally conclude that component and we can wrap that one up. But we will be looking at some other homeownership opportunities with Habitat, just because they are unique in being able to produce the affordable housing that, in a way that most other developers cannot. So I believe that concludes my presentation, so I'll open it up for any questions you have.
Thank you, Mrs. Scott, for that detailed presentation. And now I'm going to ask my colleagues if they have any questions. I want to count and acknowledge Councilmember Freeman.
Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Scott, for the presentation. I appreciate all of the details and all of the nuances around how things have shifted and changed and how you're trying to keep to the initial promise of keeping affordability in Durham. I, I do want to ask the first question, starting at the last slide, around the Habitat for Humanity. Is that the only nonprofit organization you're working with? Are there other?
In terms of homeownership, that's the only one at this point. That was a, an RFP process that was done several years ago and they were the only respondent that we had. We actually put it out three times and they were the only respondent that we had to that.
And can I ask, I'm not sure I even know where to look for your RFPs. If I can just get with some staff around making sure that that's shared out as broadly as possible. I do know a lot of, a lot of other affordable houses.
So I'll say just so it's on the record, it's on our website and for those that are interested in signing up for future RFPs of any type, you can go on our website and you can sign up as a vendor and then you'll get notices of all RFPs that get issued.
Thank you. And just tracking back, I appreciate the, the response to our residents who mentioned what happened with JJ Henderson and I do want to make sure that I say to you, I appreciate that, that this is one of the projects that you've been like on the forefront of and that I know that you'll get to the bottom of what happened and figure out why there's no generator. bottom of what happened and figure out why there's no generator, but I do want to make sure that that's a priority.
Yeah, I'm not, well, okay. Yes, I'll stop there.
And I'm mindful that this, this presentation is mainly going into our deep dive around housing, and how the Housing Authority ties into all of the other housing partners and the way that we look at housing in the city. And I know that I've been very voiced about how it's never enough money, and trying to figure out how to be supportive and making sure that there is. I know with, specifically with Fayetteville Street, you mentioned that the commercial side, you might need some support, because I'm recognizing that they're, I mean, they're limited by Housing Authority. But if there are ways that we, as a city, can be supportive in making sure that there is commercial on that property, I do want to make sure that we're aware.
Right. And to be clear, there is going to be commercial on that property. I believe right now it's, it's around 30,000 square feet is what's, what's proposed on that, and that'll be the portion that faces the Fayetteville Street itself. But, but as you go into the site, there's, that's pretty much all residential.
Thank you. And I'm, I'm mindful that this is an ongoing conversation. I do want to hear more about Lincoln Apartments and the NC State project as well, but I'll dig into that later. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to acknowledge the Councilmember Javier. Thank you. Good to see you.
You as well.
Happy New Year. I had a couple of questions about the McDougal Terrace, so really appreciate the presentation, really appreciate the update, look forward to hearing, you know, I know you mentioned some changes. With McDougal Terrace, is that going to be considered a RAD conversion, where there would be mixed market rate in there as well? I just didn't hear that.
I'm sorry, I did not say that. It will be mixed income. Anything we're doing that's going to be torn down and rebuilt is always going to be mixed income.
Okay, so that one included.
I neglected to say that.
No, thank you, I was just a little bit thrown. And then I have a question for staff more, because it's a city project. I just wanted to hear a little bit about, I'm seeing the rendering on Rigsby in our packet, and just curious to hear more about where we are in, in that process. And it could just be a rendering that somebody put there, but just was curious.
As part of my presentation, or something separate?
It's the Hunt Street Station one, and it's a city project, so it's not a question for you. I just was wondering where we are in our process around that.
I'm going to ask Keith if he has any update on that at this time.
Keith Chadwell, City Manager's Office. Good afternoon, everyone. Councilmember, I'm afraid I don't have an update on it right now, noting that you have the question provided in, as quickly as we possibly can for you.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Other than, those were my questions, I really appreciate the update. That grant that we got was incredible. I know you all have worked very hard in building trust with the community, and I can say that from, you know, right before the pandemic with McDougal Terrace, and seeing the tremendous amount of work that y'all have done, I know there's always more to do, but I just really want to appreciate the work of you and your staff.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry, Madam Manager.
So I didn't know if Keith had a more detailed update on Hunt Station, but what I can say, you know, it is sort of grayed out, because it is looked at to be future development, and obviously, you're aware that the, you know, funding that we kind of apply to our own projects has already been applied to projects. So it will come in the future with additional resources.
Thank you.
I'm acknowledging our mayor, may you know him, our mayor.
Thank you so much, Mr. Scott, for, for this presentation this afternoon. As always, I learn a lot whenever you present. I think you presented at the Durham Crime Cabinet. Every time you present, I learn something new. But I do want to ask a couple of questions about the voucher program. I get a fair number of folk calling and saying, we need a voucher. You know, the waiting list is, is, you know, we can't seem to get off the waiting list. Can you explain, well, first, what should our response be? Because I'm pretty sure I'm not the only one up here that are getting those calls. And then I think you, when you explained it, it's tied not only to the, the amount of vouchers that you have, but to your budget allocation, right?
Correct.
Did I hear that? If you would just kind of go in a little bit more detail as to, you know, when a person applies, and how that all ends up with them having one, and what that process looks like in terms of timeline.
Right. So with the tenant-based vouchers, which is the most popular program, has the most vouchers to it. Again, we open that list every three to four years, sometimes, it depends on how, how quickly folks leave the program, right? And so when that list gets open, last two times we did this, we have about 5,000 applicants, we call it down to 1,500 by doing a random sort of ranking. And then we call people in, once there is a voucher available. And what we try not to do is just put a bunch of vouchers out on the street. There are only so many units out there, so it doesn't make sense to have 400, 500 people all looking, stumbling over the same landlord. So we've, we've tried not to go beyond 200 people looking at any one time. So when people get a voucher, they then start to look, try to find the landlord who is willing to accept a voucher. And if they're successful at that, we inspect that unit, make sure that that unit adheres to the standards established by HUD, and then we move them in. It used to be that, that, that whole process of, once they found the unit and once the inspection, would take weeks. We've narrowed that down now and improved on that, so it's usually about a week's time that it takes to go through that entire process. But the key is, is that we only have X number of vouchers, just like we only have X number of housing units. So vouchers become available when people leave the program. So as long as we are housing people, whether it's a voucher or one of our other bricks-and-sticks properties, units only, we can only offer our housing when a unit leaves. Sometimes we get complaints, and people says, I've been on the list for years, and, and, you know, no one ever has reached out to us, because there just isn't the housing available. One of the reasons why we had such a focus on looking at increasing our density, where it made sense, particularly downtown, is that we would be building more units and having more availability, because, you know, few of us are doing that. Other than Housing Authority, you have a couple of other nonprofits, DHIC and CASA, who are building affordable housing. But we're, we're sort of the only games in town, and so, and the, the point is that we needed to increase the number of units, is why we've taken the approach that we have.
Now, in terms of your landlords, your private landlords now, how, how does that relationship work out with the, with the citizens who are seeking? Are they able to find? I've heard lots of folks say, we are not able to find private landlord. Speak to that a little bit, because Durham, Durham needs to hear that. This is a part that you need to hear, because this is out of the control of the city or the Housing Authority.
That is correct. And, and one of the things to make clear is that, we as the Housing Authority, we are prohibited from directing someone to a landlord. So people who get a voucher, they have to find that housing on their own. We can't do it, because it would be considered steering. But the bigger issue is, as you point out, we don't have enough landlords that are accepting housing choice vouchers. Now, we are given caps as to how much we can accept as an acceptable rent. And I don't have it with me, but the, so each bedroom size determines how much of the rent, how much of a rent we can actually say, this is okay to do. So it's like maybe $1,200 for a two-bedroom unit is the max. And in Durham, you can charge more than that for an apartment. So a lot of landlords would rather not deal with some of the restrictions that we have with income, and they'll say, we'd rather not lease to a voucher holder. Some people are just straight biased, and they don't want to lease to someone who has a voucher. And in some cases, you have landlords that have no interest in affordable housing whatsoever. They, they do what's called income discrimination. Because you're not working, or because you don't work at a job making enough money, even though we're providing 70% of that rent, you have landlords that choose not to rent to those who have their income come directly from the Housing Authority.
How, how many landlords do you think you all work with?
I think we have about 2,000 or so landlords, but please do not hold me to that. I could find out and let you all know how many landlords we have. And many of our landlords are not large, excuse me, many of our landlords are smaller, you know, they might have one or two units, three or four units. They don't have a ton of units. And so it's, it's really a large number of landlords, who sometimes have smaller sites that they have under their portfolio, and they rent one or two to a voucher holder. But there are certainly a greater need for landlords to accept vouchers. Some years ago, when the CEF, Community Investment Fund, had a whole effort around educating landlords, recruiting landlords to be accepting of vouchers, I think it's time to reinvigorate that effort, that we have some conversations with our landlords, so we can talk to them about why they are not accepting voucher holders. And that will help, at least, in getting that list of 166 as of this month, that are out there, get them housed.
I'd love to be able to be a part of that. Like to be able to be a part of that.
We're going to need you to lead that, actually.
Oh, yeah, I can do that. Not a problem. So what I'm hearing you say is, what folk are saying is actually true. You have a number of landlords of sort of large properties who have no interest in accepting vouchers.
That's correct.
And you call that income one?
Discrimination.
All righty. Now, okay, just want y'all to sit in there for a second while I formulate this next question. I think you showed a slide that had about 10,000 waiting families.
That's on a voucher list, I can go back. Look at our voucher list, but yeah, I think it's over 10,000 people. Those are our special purpose vouchers, and project-based vouchers, primarily project-based vouchers, actually. And so those are communities that, that are project-based, so some of them we've converted. So for example, J.J. Henderson is now a project-based community. So people have applied for moving into that building, and so you have this big, very big waiting list. And that's really what that reflects. Some of those waiting lists, we want to call down. It doesn't make sense to have a waiting list of 10,000, even a combined waiting list of 10,000 people, because it will take you forever to get through that list. It's better to cap that list over a few, you know, pick a number that makes sense, and then once it gets down to a certain level, then you open it up again, so you don't have a list that gets stale. Some people, you know, choose, find out the housing, they're no longer interested, you know, people sometimes pass away, all kinds of things. It just creates a larger administrative burden by having a long, large list. So that's why we keep our tenant-based voucher list to a relatively small number, and we're going to do the same with those other project-based lists as well.
But you're, you're saying, and you're, you said you have, what, 1,700 actual units?
Correct.
Total. And how many families is you saying you have?
Combined between vouchers and public housing, we have about 4,000 families.
So you have 4,000 that we can actually kind of house, and maybe 10,000 that need it. Is that what we're saying?
That's correct.
Okay, I just want to make sure that, so, and those are just folk who are applying directly to the Housing Authority?
Either the Housing Authority or properties that we have in partnership with other developers. But yes, it's, it's within our portfolio of properties. It has nothing to do outside of DHA.
So I wanted to touch on the federal funding part. I think you mentioned that when you, when you all had those scores, that those properties that came below a certain score, you were then given the mandate to bring those up to a score, and to an acceptable score, but you were also given, what, 15 million to do that?
Right. So that's our capital, you know, we, we are funded in a couple of buckets, three really. So one is the voucher program, it gets a separate pot of money. The operations of our public housing gets a pot of money, and then the capital improvements gets a separate pot of money. And I mention them as pots, because you can't use one source for another. So our capital fund is the one that's used for our large-scale repairs. We get about $3 million or so each year.
You said 3 million?
3 million.
Okay, and, but how much do you need, I guess, it would be?
Well, what we need, based on that assessment that was done, is about 50 million over the next five years. And what we currently have, when you look at what we'll collect over the next five years, excuse me, is about 15 million.
Okay. Thank you, thank you. Turn it back over to.
And if I could just make one more point around that issue. HUD itself has talked about this issue, where they said that the number of, the total amount that they have underfunded housing authorities is about $76 billion. So that's.
How much?
$76 billion.
B as in?
B as in boy.
Boy.
That's across the country. And that number is, and that issue is reflective of our capital fund, and why we're so far underfunded. And you think about it, it's, it's a cumulative thing. So if you can't make those capital repairs in, in, in one year, then they become more costly the next year, the next year, the next year. And that's kind of what we've been grappling with. I'm sorry, Councilmember.
Thank you. I'm going to acknowledge Councilmember Williams. Did you have something you wanted to say?
Yes. Thank you, Councilmember Heinrich. I, thank you for this in-depth presentation, Mr. Scott. I just had a few questions. So based on the, let's see, I wanted, I'm going to ask you a few questions based on some of our behavior as council, and how we can better assist, because this, this is becoming more and more perplexed to me. So the first question is, are you, I know you're working with private landlords, but have you considered, or are you working with private landowners to potentially purchase land? Or is that something that you can do under the jurisdiction of HUD?
We can, as a housing authority, we certainly can purchase private land. Of course, the, the real question is, you have the land, now what are you going to do with it? Where do you get the money?
Right.
Et cetera, right? Because if you're talking about affordable housing, the only way it's successful is that you have to have a subsidy of some sort. You can do that subsidy upfront by, you know, having, having, like, the thing I always say is, if somebody gave us a unit, free and clear, we still have to pay to operate that unit. We gotta pay to do the maintenance and electric, all of the utilities, et cetera. So that's, that's the issue with affordability. With HUD, they provide the subsidy for housing authorities to match that $284 we get in rent on a public housing side. They provide an additional subsidy that allows those units to, in, in theory, to operate. Of course, they're not providing the capital that's needed to keep those units where they need to be, so we end up spending a lot of maintenance money that should have been handled as part of the capital money. So I'm sorry, I might have gone a little bit too far to your question.
You helped me understand some of the other areas. I, I'm just not a fan of HUD right now. Maybe inappropriate for me to say that, but, you know, we, America tends to put up money easily in some areas, but here we are, having families on the streets. Do you know, and this may be a question that we need to figure out on the city side, do you know the amount of privately-owned apartment complexes in Durham, or properties that are turning down voucher programs, or turning down special assistance?
I do not. And, and part of the reason we don't know is, is, again, we're not involved with that recipient when they're doing their search. So they may go 20 places to find housing, but the one they find is when they come back to us and say, here's, is what we have. Or they don't find any, and after a period of time, then the voucher essentially expires.
Yeah, I, I, just through some communications, I started hearing more and more that there were privately-owned apartment properties that were no longer accepting vouchers. And now, you know, looking at the status of things, you have to make three times the amount of money to, you know, it's either two or three times the amount to, to pay that rent.
Yeah.
And, and that's just insulting injury. You may have mentioned this in your, your latter comments, I can't remember, but did we say anything about incentivizing the landlord incentivization program? Did you mention that?
I did not.
Is that something that, well, I'll ask that question to the city later as well. Maybe that could be something that we could, landlords that are working with you, or could, or would work with, you know, you, maybe we could incentivize or spark some interest there, as a, as a response to currently what's happening in, in other areas that are stopping to work with us. Is it cost that's restricting us from going higher in, in building? I was looking at some of the examples, and just being able to build taller on the current properties, I guess, have more units on it.
You see, the majority, the majority of housing that's built is usually five stories. That's because you have to go to a different construction method, which is more costly, and if you want to go higher. which is more costly, and if you want to go higher. It is, it is something that we've, we've talked to at least one of our developers about, particularly given the location of the site, can we go higher? And we'll have to see, because now with the cost increases that you've seen in the, in the construction field, it's, it's very difficult.
Yeah.
So, but that is something that we have on the table. And that's why I've also said I don't have new numbers for you all in terms of what, what the ultimate numbers will look like for the sites that I presented, because we haven't gotten finalization in that yet. But it is something that's on the table for us.
Yeah, I, and I am forcing myself to make sure I'm being, you know, I'm trying to discipline myself not to put two and two, two different parts together. What I mean by that is, when housing becomes exclusive, it becomes more expensive. And we tend to have issues with that sometimes. And that's something we're gonna have to figure out. But then you have this situation, which is a whole nother monster on, you know, just the amount of families that are in need versus the amount of availability. That is, I don't even know where to start. But it does lead me to the question of, could you tell me some of the wraparound services that you have that are provided for current tenants? And what types of services are in place to help them maybe not have to rely on this? And I know for a fact, we're always gonna need affordable housing because just the metric in how we determine affordability, AMI, there's always gonna be that bottom tier, and it sucks. But what types of services in regards to wraparound, a whole list of resources are provided with your properties or your tenants? And are there any type of economic wraparound services that help them maybe reverse the need for this, this, this resource? And just a caveat to that, the reason why I'm asking is because Durham has about 27,000 job openings, but those jobs are, they require a specific skill set or a specific education. You can say the number, but the types of jobs matter. And so it's just not as easy said, it's not as easily done as said.
Right. So services, I would not say they're wraparound, but services that we have. Housing Authorities don't get money for services, right? So we do have a Resident Services Office, and it tries to basically work with a whole myriad of partners across the city and county. And so it's everything from, from, you know, Duke's Nursing School, NCCU's nursing, et cetera. We do have a couple of programs that do specifically work with our residents. One is Family Self-Sufficiency, and the other one is Ross, which is similar to Family Self-Sufficiency. With the FSS program, residents who are working, they can escrow the additional rent that they would have to pay if they have a series of goals that they have. And then they can use the money that they accumulate to do anything that they've set around their goals. So it could be anything from buying a house to buying a car, things of that nature. So we do have that program, that's a grant-funded program through HUD. We have the Ross program, which is sort of similar in nature. With the McDougal Terrace community, we were successful in winning something called a Jobs Plus Grant. It is only for McDougal Terrace, and it is because of the way the program is designed, it's the only community that would qualify. So that's a three-year, four-year grant program geared directly to encouraging residents at McDougal Terrace to go to work. As I talked about, our housing is based on your income. So if you go to work, you make more money, your rent goes up based on that 30%. With the Jobs Plus program, there is a freeze in that increase in rent. So it's a great incentive program. We are not quite a year in yet, February marks our first year. I don't recall the numbers offhand, but I think we have about 100-plus participants in the program. We have about 50 or 60 that are actually working. So that's something that we're excited about. We still have more work to do, and it's only its first year. And then with the CNI grant we received, we received funding for six years to work with the families on that particular site. So that really will be wraparound services because we'll have case management, we have other partners that really would be working with that family much more holistically than what DHA is able to do now, based on the available funding that we have. Our Resident Service staff, mighty but very small, it's a staff of about five people.
Thank you. And this is my last question. Are you in need of employer partners?
We are in need of employer partners, for sure. And one of the things that I think, though, is as equally important is kind of the, the working with those residents to get them employment-ready. So we do have a program that we're doing with the Workforce Board. We've gotten some funding from the Community Development Department, and we're gonna be working on how do we work with our residents to get them workforce-ready? And not just kind of, okay, now you're workforce-ready and you step away, but actually be there and provide some support around them so that as things get bumpy, you can keep them on track. We had a pilot program where we were trying to get, particularly with a target for women who were interested in the construction field. Started out with six. We ended up with one person who went through the program, got employed, was doing very well, that actually got hired by that contractor, but eventually ended up having to step away from the position because childcare was not consistent and readily available. So when you look at these job assistance programs, you still revolve around some of the key basic issues. Transportation, childcare. Reliable, dependable childcare remains one of the biggest barriers that you see. The other barrier is this, this thing that's been termed the benefits cliff. So when you get a job making just enough that it ends up causing you to lose some of your benefits, but not enough to make up for what the benefits were doing. Those are, I think, probably the three bigger barriers, you know? Getting them ready, dealing with those childcare transportation issues, and then that loss of benefits that you receive when you make just enough to cause a loss, but not enough to make up for what the benefits, what you were getting.
Yep, that is, that is the reality, and I'm glad you stated that. If you are in need, and this is me directly offering this, if you are in need of employment partners to, you know, once individuals are ready, I have resources for that. And I, and I think that that's part of us helping to complete this full circle of ecosystem. Also, I know that there are some childcare facilities that are being built. I know the county has invested in some as well, in Durham Tech. Kate's Corner just opened up. There are some downtown, and I hope that we'll be able to utilize those as resources as well. I'm really excited to hear about the Jobs Plus program for McDougal Terrace. I'd like to see what we could do for other properties. I know I've been talking about, I think it's a bridge benefits gap fund or something, where basically, right now, and this is me personally speaking, I do believe that, you know, this federal program, the federal government, I guess, incentivizes poverty. They, we've created these, you know, properties to put folks in, and it's a trap, you know? We provided them assistance that was really attractive because of their needs at the time, and we haven't really given them a way out, you know? And as long as they make a penny more, they lose everything. So I hope that we could find, at least here locally, because in the bull city, we give a damn. And I hope that we can find a way to support these families that want to get out of those properties and get on, to become more independent. And I'm for all hands on deck, and I'll bring every resource I have and every partner I have to help you all with that. So reach out personally, we can, we can connect those resources. Thank you.
So one thing I'll just say, you know, the mayor mentioned earlier, and Steve in LA were talking about the PERC program and the Bloomberg. So PERC, which is Partnerships for Equitable and Resilient Communities, that's part of what we're looking at. Because even though there might be a focus around our justice-involved community, the issue is broader and bigger than that. It's not just about housing, but how do we get them a job? And how do we make sure that they are job-ready and all of these other components? And I mentioned that just to say that what you talk about is exactly how we're thinking about these efforts so that it's not just about a house or a job, but how all of this stuff interconnects.
Hey, it's our Justice Reborn. Make sure y'all connect.
Oh, we are, we are.
Okay, good.
No, that's right, you weren't here for that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Williams. I'm going to acknowledge Councilmember Javier and then Councilmember Johnson.
Thank you, I just had one quick question. And I know you can't necessarily answer this, but I was just thinking about, okay, so we're with the folks with vouchers. They're basically left to their own devices to try and go and find housing. And then what, and you may not be able to answer this, but are, what supports are there? I mean, I'm imagining folks with, you know, transportation issues, potentially language barriers, cultural gaps, right? And so we're kind of just leaving folks out to just kind of fend for themselves and...
That is, that is...
Oh, God.
That's accurate.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that...
So that, and I think that is a great point in terms of thinking about how there could be some relationships with some other organizations around helping our families find housing and, you know, being prepared for a landlord experience. That is something that I think is a gap that definitely could use filling.
Thank you, and I can imagine relationships with our public schools when I think about families, because often those are the first touchpoints for our families is they're going to their guidance counselors, they're going to supports in that school building because that's where they have a relationship. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilmember Johnson.
Thank you, Councilmember Hyman. Thank you for being here and doing this presentation. This was really great. I feel like I don't have any questions for you because I hear this all the time, as your board liaison. But it's good to, it's good to get a review and to have all the folks here learn about the work that you're doing. So I just have one comment, I have a couple of comments. I was struck by the, when you said that public housing was a failed model. And I think I just want to add to that. It's a failed model because the federal government intentionally set it up to fail. It's not, there are perfectly, you know, functional, amazing public housing programs in countries all over the world that support people that are not a kind of place that where everyone is trying to escape. This was an intentional decision by our federal government to defund public housing in favor of more public-private partnership, I will say pro-corporate models. And that's just where we're at. We are dealing, you know, the facts on the ground are what they are, and we're responding to that. But yeah, it's not, there's nothing, it didn't fail because of the model inherently. It failed because the federal government decided they weren't gonna give us any money. And the other thing I wanted to say is that, you know, the city of Durham is, we have built and put a lot of energy into our affordable housing infrastructure, our programs supporting the DHA. We passed the largest housing bond in, you know, in the history of the state of North Carolina, and we still have 10,000 families on the waiting list for vouchers. So, you know, the, we cannot solve this problem on our own. But I also think we're gonna have to do more. I think we're, you know, if we want to continue to do the work, to do affordable housing work at the level that we've been able to do for the last few years, we're looking at another housing bond. We're looking at increasing, you know, our, the tax levy for our affordable, for our dedicated housing fund. Like, we have to put more money into this if we want to see the kind of results that our community really needs. And we desperately need help from the state and from the federal government. Because even if we put every penny of our money into housing, we would not be able to solve the problem. It is beyond the scope of what the city government can actually do. But, you know, things that I want us to continue thinking about and talking about on the council are how we, you know, how we can continue to invest, how we can continue to invest and invest more. Pretty much all the money from our, you know, from our 2019 bond is allocated, it's committed, you know? There, there are, no new projects can be funded with what we already have. And we, we see from the numbers that you've showed us and just from, you know, walking around the community and talking to people that we know, that the need is still, is still extremely, extremely dire. And we need to do more. Thank you.
Okay, because I was, I wanted to say, go ahead. Who's going next? Mayor O'Neal, and then Councilmember Freeman?
I'm waiting in line.
I didn't have anything. I'm gonna be last, because I'm sitting here burning.
Okay, I didn't have anything, Mayor, I'm sorry.
Oh, okay. I just had one question around funding. How underfunded are you? And I know that is a bugaboo, but I just want to get an idea, you know, because when you think about 10,000 people that are just, that are coming to you alone that's out there, we know that's not everybody, we know that, okay? And then you have your housing currently 2,000, about 2,000. So that's about a three times, five times more than we actually are housing now. And they haven't put money, I'm with Julian, with the federal government. This is one of the things I wish I had known before I gave that little pop-up, so I could add this piece, I didn't even think about that. So they've been underfunding for decades now, for decades. So I just want to get an idea of what you think from where you say, because you work with the Housing Authority for decades. You have one of the hardest jobs, I think, in the city because it's always a no-win for you in your position. You know, as you're trying to transition and manage this, there's always like, never enough, never. So you, it's, you're kind of managing.
Correct.
So, so what does that number look like? If you were funded, and you're, and I know you probably thought about it over...
Well, I mean, it depends on how you want to look at it, right? So if you, if you look at the numbers that I mentioned earlier, based on the HUD standard, which is not what we aspire to do, it's $50 million over the next five years to get our properties to a standard that is acceptable. So that's the floor. When you think about, one way I talked about it was when I looked at, when we doing, we were doing the renovation work on Maureen and Daymar, it was about $100,000 a unit to do the renovation work on those properties. So that's another way to think about it, is just, you know, if you gutted a property, what would it take to get it to an, really what we'd expect as a standard? And any one of us would want to go and live in that unit. And that means, you know, redoing everything from the studs all the way out. So that, if you look at renovation of a unit, that's at least $100,000, right? So that's another way of thinking about it. And then the other way is, if you're gonna tear down or rebuild, what is the cost per unit today to replace a unit? And so, you know, 250, 300,000, somewhere in that neighborhood. That's simplistic ways to think about it.
Thank you, and thank you, Councilmember.
We're going to, I'm going to acknowledge Councilmember Freeman.
Thank you, Councilmember Hyman. I appreciate the conversation, and I just had a few more questions. And they're specifically tied to the way in which I feel like, I don't want to, I want to kind of lift up what Councilmember Williams is saying and juxtapose to what Councilmember Johnson is saying and realizing, like, there's this piece of how public housing has been put forward as if it could solve the world's problem for housing, and that's not the case. But there is definitely the need to always have available housing that is for the public, especially acknowledging that there are folks who have reached a certain age and will not go back to work. And there are people who have developmental or mental disabilities that are not going to be able to work $7.25 an hour to ever cover the cost of housing. And then on the other side, it's creating the kind of system so that folks who are in public housing do have stair steps kind of latch, kind of getting their way out. And so I really wanted to, I just wanted to lift that up because it's really like two different sides of this coin. And making sure that public housing is always available is important. And so whether it's the federal government that we need to take this up with, or HUD specifically, or just our private, you know, you know, private, you know, housing partners, or even just private business, like, this is something that we have not, we've not delved into in a, in a level that I feel like we do need to. And I'm mindful, because I'm having conversations with folks who are trying to raise, you know, investments of $75 million to do, you know, this innovative idea, but we have people who don't have housing. And so, I, yeah, I just wanted to say that. And then on the operations side, I can't help but just want to say that there's, there's a piece of me that's concerned because as we're moving to more of this VAS, you know, mixed, mixed-income, private...
Rad.
Rad property managers who are in place, who's gonna be responsible for the oversight of those property managers? Because as we saw with CCI, it's a concern, but somebody's got to be responsible for that. If you're already short in your budget on operations now, what does it look like when you have 12 different versions of CCI or TCB or any other organization in place?
So the, DHA is responsible for that oversight, number one. The other piece is, what we want to be able to do is build up our property management so that we can take over the management of those properties in the future. We've just had such a struggle operationally, primarily because we don't have the staffing. Otherwise, we'd be in a position to manage those properties ourselves. So built into each one of our relationships, we have a, we have a clause that says that, you know, after a period of years, DHA would be able to take over management. But DHA has to get its management operations up to par to be in a position to take that over. And because we've been struggling with staffing issues, we haven't even begun to make any inroads towards that preparation.
Thank you. And I felt like that was necessary for you to say. And on another note, I just want to just hearken back to the conversation about income-based discrimination, and see if you've heard anything from our, from your counterpart in Charlotte with the way that things have gone with that ban on, you know, income-based discrimination.
I haven't yet, but I mean, it was just recently done. There are other states, though. When I was in Maryland, there was a big push to have a state law that would ban income-based discrimination. And I think they made some progress. They were, they were, every year they'd get a little closer, a little closer. But there were some cities that already had implemented that. So it does exist in other places where they say, basically, you can't discriminate against someone because of what their income source is, which is essentially saying you can't, you know, deny someone who has a voucher. You know, and for me, it's a little perplexing, because you're basically saying 70% of your rent is going to be guaranteed, right? How often is that the case? And it shows up in your bank account the first of every month automatically. So I think, like I mentioned, that if we can kind of revisit this notion of a landlord roundtable and begin to get into some of those discussions to understand why they aren't accepting vouchers, is it because the vouchers don't give them enough income? Or is it because they're just discriminating against people who happen to have a voucher?
Thank you. I appreciate that.
And one last point I'll make is that one of the other challenges is around security deposits. So when we were doing this work before, a group of landlords said, you know, "Look, it's not really about the security deposit. We just want it when it's, when we need it." So we want to know that if someone abuses a unit, that there's going to be money available. And so we were talking about putting together a security deposit pool. And that way, if you're a voucher holder, you might have $50 or $100 you can do for security deposit, but if you're part of that pool, then that landlord knows they can get, say, up to 2,000 if they needed it. So it's a way to kind of put the funds together, it's almost like an insurance policy for, for a security deposit, that would give landlords a lot of comfort as well.
That's a great idea. I think it would be nice to get those landlord roundtables going up again. And I'm not sure if the mayor has bandwidth for it, but I would say that I'd be willing to offer support in that, because I think it's important. I will acknowledge that I know a lot of folks who have vouchers, and I've heard so much feedback that I'm always calling and reaching out to figure out what is going on with the Housing Authority stuff.
I've received those calls.
I will say that I think it would be good, and I'm not sure who we need to talk to on staff to figure that out, but I would be willing to support that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmembers. And so I've been sitting here burning to just say, again, years, 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 years ago, I was a director for the housing voucher program in New York. And one of the things that we faced was that the landlords, first of all, discriminated because they didn't want, they felt that the, the people who were looking for the housing vouchers were going to bring a certain level of crime, a certain level of drugs, a certain level, right? So definitely, that's already preconceived discrimination. But also, we had the problem of them not getting their money in time, right? Now, you just said it comes in their account monthly, on time, all the time, which is one, which was, which was one of my jobs, which is kind of, kind of rally those landlords together to hear their concerns and try to come up with strategic plans to be able to help them to want to, you know, ex, want to give more housing to our clients. So I also would be willing to join in with the mayor and Freeman to try to see what we can do to make this more attractive for our landlords to be able to offer housing. I do know that they probably are going, are going to be able to get more money because of this, the market of where we're at with housing right now, with actually having other people get these apartments. But I think that if we can, like, I think my councilmember Williams said, if we can come up with some type of incentives to be able to help them to kind of, you know, house our clients, not clients, excuse me, our residents, who I'm thinking about my social work at years ago, our residents who really are in need, but also re-educate them that, you know, everybody needs help, and everybody needs a chance to try to get, you know, a place to live. The other thing is, when you talk about those, so let me just say this too, from, from a little girl who grew up in public housing, and I'm going to speak to Councilmember Johnson's point, that public housing wasn't built for failure, it was built for temporary help, right? But what happened was, the lack of funding, the lack of jobs, and the lack of being able to move people from one level of function to another level of function, then it became an issue where you have all this crime and all these things going on. I am a product of the fact that I grew up in public housing, my whole family, right? But also, I was able to get educated, I was able to get a job, and I was able to move out of that environment. But that's because there were services that were wrapped around my family to be able to do that. It cannot happen if that doesn't happen, because I wouldn't be sitting here. I would still be at 831 Noble Avenue, where my mother is now, okay? But all of us were able to get, and she always said, like, "I don't want you to be a victim of your environment." But you, you know, you have to have those services to be able to get you out of that. So I'm saying, education, jobs, to be able to move you to another level of function. And the other question I have, because this is also from my history, a lot of times when I was growing up in public housing, so I would live in that apartment, and then you're growing up there, right? And then maybe your mother or father dies off, God forbid, and then you stay, but they're able to stay in that apartment. Is that happening? Because again, that's eliminating the amount of people, the amount of people that we can get to get off that list to go into their housing. You understand what I'm saying? So you might still have that 10,000 people waiting, but if I've been living in public housing for 30 years, because I've seen it, I know it, right? My parents die off, then because I've been a person living in that apartment, then I get first dib on that apartment, which then means that that apartment is not going to come available for anybody else to get in. Can you speak to that? Because I know that's what happened in New York.
That's, that's part of federal policy. So there are, basically, if that happens, then that, that family can still continue to live there as long as there's an adult in the household. But I, but I'd also say, they wouldn't be living there if they didn't qualify for the housing, right? And, and, and for a lot of people don't know, the, the maximum income is 80% of AMI to go into public housing. So it can be a pretty high number. We don't have any, most of our folks are nowhere close to that, like overwhelmingly, no one is ever even close to that. So it's kind of to the point that both Councilman Williams made and Councilmember, Councilmember Freeman, when you think about public housing, correct, it is not what it was intended to be. But if you think about this, if I have a job, let's say I'm making $10 an hour, can I go out in the private sector and get a house that doesn't cost me 70, 80% of my income? So you're, you're better off in public housing, because you're only paying 30% of that income, and you can do more to serve your family. And if I'm making $20 an hour, but I have a larger family, et cetera, et cetera. To the point that Councilmember Freeman made, we have, and that's why I always show the disability number, we have a lot of folks that have disability. So that limits their ability to earn. But where do they go for housing if you don't, if you can't get income-based housing, right? So it's a little bit of flipping the notion of getting out of public housing, and I think we need to think about, we changed the public housing environment, so they're mixed, that's why I'm a fan of mixed-income communities. So you create communities in which are welcoming, and socio-economically, they are communities that anyone would want to be a part of, so that it does lead to, like, in your case, you talked about being, you know, essentially a second-generation public housing resident, but you've been able to get out because your family was able to have the resources to get you there. So you, you create environments that are, that are well-structured, well-run, comfortable, and that you have a mix of incomes and a mix of folks there that encourages folks to go out and do the things that we all aspire to do. And I think that's how we have to look at public housing as a model. So it's a part of the community, not some independent island of the community of Durham.
Yeah, and then my last, and you're absolutely right, and so that's why I'm a fan of mixed housing too, because when you have a certain level of people living in one area, like, for example, you know, when you're living, and I'm not saying that this has happened here, but as a person who grew up in the projects, you know, we were dealing with rats and roaches and this and that, and the crime, right? And you just feel like you're in this fixated situation, and you can't get out of it.
Right.
Right? And it's not like, you feel like you have no hope. And again, without education and without jobs, I wouldn't be sitting here. But the other thing is to, and I think I had a senior moment, lost my, my point, because I just am very passionate about this, because again, people don't want to live in those type of environments. They want to live in good environments. And I think the bottom line is that we need more money. As, as Councilmember Johnson said, we need to kind of advocate on a state and a federal level, and it's a shame, and really ridiculous, that we have to even sit here and talk about the fact of, like, the mayor asks, "How much money are you lacking?" This is ridiculous, because it should be a common right for everybody to be able to live in housing. That should be a common right. We shouldn't be fighting for this. We shouldn't, but again, this is what it is. But again, thank you so much for, you know, I can go on, because I'm just passionate about it, and so are my students, they're doing all kinds of projects about housing, because, you know, I teach social work. But thank you for your deep dive. Again, we're going to continue to have, oh, the mayor has, go ahead. Mayor O'Neal?
And City Manager Paige has one, and I have one too, but I'm going to let City Manager Paige go first.
City Manager Paige.
Thank you. I know you referenced this in your presentation, Anthony, but I wanted to bring it, you know, to some, some very specifics in terms of just looking, Googling, looking at average two-bedroom household in Durham in October is $1,594 a month. That may not be perfect, but that's what came up on my phone here. But when I look at fair market rents, it's 1315. So there's, you know, there's a fairly large difference. And I was wondering if you could highlight what that means as it relates to folks with vouchers, looking for apartments, and the other side of that, the, the folks who are renting apartments?
Right. So, I mean, clearly, that tells you the gap between what the FMRs are, fair market rents, and what the average is. And keep in mind, it's an average, right? So there's, there's a lot of folks that are, apartments that are less than that, and there are plenty that are higher. We're, we're looking at that issue from a couple of perspectives. One, we have the ability to raise our fair market rent to 110%. And there's been a lot of discussion at HUD to allowing us to do 120. It did allow us to go up to 120 during the pandemic, and we are actually crunching the numbers now to figure out if we can do that now, so that we can be much more competitive with what's out in the marketplace. Because ultimately, what that number also says is that, on the higher end, you're going to see higher rents, the lower end, meaning the lower-quality units, are going to be less. And so we, we want to make sure that when people are finding units, they're finding them in, you know, decent neighborhoods, and they're decent quality housing, too. So the flip side of that, though, is that our bucket, our budget bucket is only this big. So if we're raising the FMRs, we're reducing the number of vouchers that are available. And that's the challenge there, not to mention the fact that, once we raise those FMRs and we got to pay for that, out of that same bucket, and so we got to be careful how we are doing this and rolling it out, so we don't find ourselves in a deficit situation.
Just, just one, one last thing, and this probably is going to be, can be answered at, I know I've, I've heard Councilwoman Johnson and Councilwoman Javier talk about this. When I went to be a part of the initiative with Bloomberg, where you have about 40 mayors from all across the world, housing was not one of their issues. Housing was not one of their issues. And I've heard, and I just want to raise up that point for some of our seasoned councilwomen to talk into that space to the general public about what they know in that area. And I always hear them talk about housing being a commodity, and that it has, it's, it looks very different in the United States versus other countries who have done it well. So can you all spend just a moment, just trying to lift that up, so that people will understand when you say that, what that means, and that the greatest country in the world, the world, doesn't act like it in housing? Because I clearly heard a lot of those mayors from other countries saying, "We don't have this issue. That is not an issue for us."
I'm always happy to talk about this.
Please, please speak to that.
Yeah, I mean, I think this country just has a very particular history around the commodification of human needs. And housing in the United States is treated entirely, almost entirely, as something that is, housing and land bought and sold on a market. And it just presents really striking problems when something that everyone needs to survive is only allocated based on weather and how much you can pay. And I will disagree with one of my colleagues, I forget who said that, you know, public housing isn't the solution. I believe, actually, that public housing is 100% the solution, that government-provided housing is the only way to guarantee that housing is provided to every resident of this country as a human right. There has to be a government-funded or subsidized option for housing for every single person, because otherwise, if you can't afford housing, you're on the street. Or you're staying with family, or you're living in a basement or a car, right? Because if you, if you make housing entirely under the control of a capitalist market, it, you know, you get the problems that we have here, where billions of dollars of foreign capital comes into the city, and all of a sudden, nobody can afford to live downtown. And it's something that is entirely unregulated. Our, our housing market is much less regulated than housing markets in other countries. Government have very, in North Carolina especially, we have very little ability to intervene in the housing market in order to make the changes that would need to be made for people to be able to afford housing, things like inclusionary zoning, which is banned, rent control, which is banned, that in other states that, you know, that still have, where housing is still a commodity that is bought and sold, there are levers that governments can use to make that marketplace a little bit less toxic and more accessible for folks. We don't even have those options. The countries that are most successful with housing their entire populations are the ones who tax their rich and invest that money into providing housing for people, and we choose not to do that here. And that's why we're in this situation. And we, so we are left to mitigate around the margins as much as we can. And I think Durham honestly does a much better job of doing that than most other cities in this country. We have an incredible partnership between the city and the housing authority. We invest, you know, millions and millions of dollars of tax funding every year. We had 70% plus support for our housing bond, like, our residents get it, our leadership get it, and we're doing as much as we can. But the structure of the system is against us, and you don't fix structural problems with individual actions, you fix them with structural change. And that's what we're lacking. And unfortunately, even though we are the government, we are the smallest and weakest branch of the government, and do not have the capacity to make the kind of structural change that we would, that we would really need. So, you know, so we need the government, the federal government, to invest in housing the way they do in Western Europe. That's the only way we get out of this mess. We can help, but we can't fix it. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Councilmember Javier, do you want to say?
I can just say ditto. And I do want to say, I mean, this is not a, I mean, FDR's Second Bill of Rights included, you know, housing as a right. And we have not, in my opinion, honored that. It's not that this is, this is not a new problem in this country. And we know that the legacy of who carried that burden in this country is very different. I can say that we brought, when folks are like, "Oh, no government intervention," there is a whole group and class of people, what you would call white ethnics after World War II, who absolutely benefited from massive government intervention. And it brought a whole generation of people into the middle class, and it was probably one of the times we were in the most stable and most affluent. So it's not that we don't even, we do have some of that in this country. We just choose, we chose, and I will not get too deeply into politics, but you can look at an election in 1980 to make some real clear distinctions on the decisions that we made and where we were moving with economic policy in this country. And Chile has a horrible history around that, because they are the birthplace of neoliberal politics, if you know anything about economics and the Chicago Boys. Thank you.
So I'm going to wrap it up, but I just want to, I think I have, remember my senior moment, question, well, statement, that I'm speaking to Councilmember Javier, when she talked about some of the barriers that some of our residents might have when they're trying to look for housing. And from a social, a social work standpoint, like, a lot of our residents, again, like she said, language barriers, but also sometimes landlords can be intimidating. And sometimes they don't know how to navigate or negotiate or talk, you know, to the landlord. So that's why we need more case management, and I know we have some programs out there with some more case management services, to be able to help them navigate and, because, you know, as, as a social worker many years ago, I would go out with clients and they would, I mean, you know, my clients as a social worker, and they would be intimidated, and sometimes the land... and sometimes the landlords wouldn't treat them nice. You know? So they need somebody there to advocate for them, so, yeah.
I'm gonna turn it back to our mayor.
I just wanted to end on, there are resources regarding employers ready to partner. Just let me know so we can bring those to you to help get people hired.
Will do. Thank you all.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Scott. And thank you, Councilwoman Jose Hyman, for leading a very, very informative and sort of sad discussion. For me, I just have to state on the record that for African-Americans and slave people living in America, we have never been housing secure. Never, never, ever. And, and, and that's our reality. So when you, and then if you put that in with the young people who have had some justice involved background, they have never, ever had an opportunity to have a chance at the American dream. And so hopefully with the justice movement, with Mr. Scott and all of the other community partners that we have there, we're going to make the difference that we can. But as you know, it's going to take more than us. We really need people to think about the commitments that folk who they elect are going to, if they really want to help their neighbors. We got to make some different kinds of commitments to our neighbors in terms of housing. That should be a right. I'm just saying it flat out. You should have a right to have some place to lay your head as a human being. This is ridiculous. The greatest country in the world ought to act like it, in terms of housing.